... to order, and if we, and we have a roll call? Call to order, okay. If we can, let's do the invocation. All those who would like to participate, please stand. Heavenly Father, you are always with us and beside us. Be with us this evening as we consider the affairs of our great city. Give us the patience to listen, the wisdom to decide, and the strength to act. Amen. And at this point, may we have a moment of silence in honor of those who paid the ultimate price for our city and our nation. Thank you all. Appreciate it. Now, the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. The Republic of which stands one nation under God, indivisible, and every being just as one.
Okay, thank you. Okay, Madam Clerk, do we have a roll call?
Yes, Your Honor, all present.
Could I have a motion at this time for certification of the closed session?
Second.
The vote is open. Vice Mayor Wilson, may I have your vote, please? By a vote of 11 to 0, you've certified the closed session to be in accordance with the motion to read.
Okay, thank you. At this point, could I have a motion to approve the amendments of the informal and formal sessions of October 1st, 2024, and the formal session of October 8th, 2024? Do we have a second? Okay.
The vote is open.
All righty.
Mayor, may I? Thank you. By a vote of 10 to 0, with Councilmember Taylor abstaining, you have approved the amendments as submitted.
And then, proposed hearings, okay. We're going to have open for the public hearings, and the first one will be the proposed charter amendment, implement the 10-1 system.
The first speaker is Brian Sullivan. After Mr. Sullivan is R.K.
Good evening and welcome.
All right, I'd like to take a moment here while to thank you for allowing this opportunity for me to speak to everybody and participate in the political process here. I'm going to talk in support of the 10-1 system. To do that, I'd like to read a couple of things I found on the city's website. This is from the Envisioned Virginia 2040 Committee. The committee envisions a Virginia Beach that is well-planned, a community of exciting, diverse neighborhoods, each offering unique opportunities to live, work, play, and grow in a culturally rich and safe environment. A few years later, on the Virginia Beach City Council goals for 2017 through 2022, the city was supporting preventing discrimination to create an inclusive community welcoming to all. From the 2023 Comprehensive Plan Draft Policies under Communities and Neighborhoods has the backbone of place types in Virginia Beach. The comprehensive plan will identify the character of each and take steps to protect what makes these places special. And then, from the 2024 Focus Group Feedback on the City of Virginia Beach Comprehensive Plan Update, the citizens expressed that the city needs to foster communities of belonging and engagement. Now, all four of these statements from our city, from our city leaders, and from our citizens express the value of the uniqueness of all our neighborhoods and the need for our city to protect them, to foster, to develop, and to encourage their civic engagement. But under at-large voting, it's easy for some communities to become lost. What better way to serve our communities than to have a single-member district voting system, the 10-1 system, where every locale has its own elected representative to abdicate for them? No neighborhood will get left behind. Perhaps that's why over 80% of the voters, according to Cooper, the study you guys commissioned, that over 80% of the voters support the 10-1 voting system. So what's the problem? Why are we here? Why hasn't it happened yet? Well, back in 2019, Standis Melvin was quoted in the local news stating, in reference to the lack of city contracts being given to women and minorities. His quote, "I have talked to colleagues who have repeatedly tried to get big contracts and haven't gotten them," Melvin said. Or they're just used to big names getting the contracts, so they don't go for them at all. Now, that statement regarding big names seems to be a textbook example of rule by faction, as defined by James Madison in Federalist Number 10.
Thank you very much, sir. Appreciate you coming.
My time is up.
Yes, sir.
Oh, how sad.
Thank you for coming. Appreciate it.
I should have spoken faster. Thank you.
The next speaker is R.K. Kowalowicz, and then Dorothy Patterson.
Good evening, everybody. I just want to set the record straight. Virginia Beach does not have a 10-1 district system. It has a 7-3-1 at-large system. The charter has never been changed, and today's agenda item proves that. The city charter is the constitution of Virginia Beach. It takes precedent over all state law and city ordinances. This has been confirmed by Earn versus Nygaard case, where three judge panel ruled that the charter takes precedent. Recently, the current Attorney General wrote several opinions that charter must be followed. Here are some facts to how we got here today. March 2021, city loses the Holloway lawsuit regarding election system. December 2021, city appeals the Holloway case. July 27th, 2022, the city wins its appeal in the Holloway case. The U.S. Court Appeals vacates the Holloway court order, remands the case back down to lower court for any further litigation. August 16th, 2022, the Assistant City Attorney tells council they are not under a court order and they must follow the law. I want to thank Barbara Henley, who was the only councilperson who spoke up against the 10-1 system and advocate for the referendum. November 8th, 2022, the city knowingly conducted an unlawful city council election. May 25th, 2023, there was a Zoom meeting with Judge Jackson, the city, and the Holloway's attorneys. The judge said, "You better fix this, or you're not going to have an election in 2024." You have to ask yourself this question: If it was not going to be illegal in 2024, how was it illegal in 2022? On August 23rd, the city council votes to redistricting plan ordinance to usurp the power of the charter. November 2023, the Holloway case was dismissed with no further litigation. Spring of 2024, the General Assembly, the governor did not approve the redistricting plan to change the charter of Virginia Beach. The Virginia deal and rule requires everything to be expressly in writing, or it's void. There's only one way to change the charter of Virginia. It's Virginia Code 152201 states, you have to have a charter election slash referendum, then go before the General Assembly for a two-thirds approval vote by both houses and signed off by the governor. This has not happened. Article 1, Section 9 of the Virginia Constitution says, "You shall not suspend law," excuse me, it's Article 1, Section 7 of the Virginia Constitution, says, "You shall not suspend law." Article 1, Section 9 says, "You shall not write ex post facto law." Article 1, Section 10 of the U.S. Constitution says, "You shall not write ex post facto law." And that's exactly what's taken place in this city. You're writing laws that do not exist in law. You cannot do it. You cannot do it. Thank you.
The next speaker is Dorothy Patterson. After Ms. Patterson is Craig Henson.
Good evening.
Good evening. Good evening, and I would like to start by saying that our current city council is illegal and does not have the authority to make any decisions since the election in 2022 was held illegally by not following the city charter that states Virginia Beach has an at-large 7-3-1 election system. It is quite obvious that the city is still not, let me repeat, still not following the city charter for the 2024 election, since you are holding a public hearing tonight for amending the city charter to a 10-1 election system by trying to pass a redistricting plan. I would also like to correct the record that the city is not adopting a redistricting plan. August 7th, 2023, the Virginia Polit stated the city is wanting to formally adopt a ward-based election system, not a redistricting plan. This city council is trying to again pass the same unlawful ordinance that was done in August 2023 to present again to the General Assembly. The ward-based election system is a whole new election system for the city, not a redistricting plan. According to a teleconference on May 25th, 2023, between the federal judge and the Holloway case, the Holloway's attorney stated the city is still under 7-3 system, which is currently on the books as a matter of law. This means you cannot adopt this proposed redistricting plan. Also, at the May 25th Holloway case teleconference, the federal judge stated that, stated, "If the election system is not changed, there is not going to be an election for the city in 2024." By making this statement, the judge recognizes that the election system has not ever been changed to reflect the 10-1 system in the city charter. I would like for someone to explain to me, then, how we had a legal election in November 2022 when the city charter had not been changed, and you are again having an election in 2024 when the city charter has not been changed. With Virginia being a Dillon Rule state, all changes have to be written in the charter to be able to do it. Otherwise, all actions are void. A court order cannot usurp the law, and the court did not tell the city to break the law to implement the 10-1 system. And the Holloway court order was vacated July 27th, 2022. The city charter is the ultimate law for the city to follow. Since we, the people, have not voiced our opinion, the city is required by Virginia Code 15.2201 to have a charter election referendum to let the people decide which election system they desire in Virginia Beach. What the majority of Virginia Beach citizens do not realize is the city did and continues to try-
Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
The next speaker is Craig Henson. After Mr. Henson is Tim Ritter.
Good evening, city council. Good evening. The fact that this paper says a proposed charter amendment to implement, that means it hasn't been put into place, which makes me question the lawfulness of the prior elections that we've had. Are people on our council right now unlawfully? No one wants to speak up. Well, when it comes to the charter, there's another lawsuit going on. My IFP, Mr. Styles, got accepted by the federal court, which means I have less than 30 days, which I filed this charter lawsuit back in February, which, there's a lot of problems in our charter. I spoke on June 18th about this. Chapter 20, chapter 21, elections in chapter 3. If you don't believe me, I'm currently waiting on an Attorney General opinion, because on August 28th, I went before the Code Commission to talk about chapter 20, because it's not matching the law. There's a lot of problems in our charter. Mr. Remick, when you get a chance, can you reach out to me, too? We got sidewalk issues down the boulevard, ADA concerns, if you don't mind. Thank you. Ex post facto law is what you're doing. You're creating law after the fact, years after the fact. It's obstruction. Suspension of law is injurious to rights. And in my lawsuit, because I'm disabled, I've added, it's injurious to health. Thank you.
The next speaker is Tim Ritter. After Mr. Ritter is Gary McCollum.
Good evening.
Good evening. Not accustomed to speaking here, but we have a theater, and I've started a small business, a nonprofit theater, a number of years ago. I've seen most of you there. Mayor Dyer, you cut the ribbon there right at the beginning of COVID. We've seen you guys there. We met you in other places, and I agree a lot with what the first speaker said, that we need some diversity in things. We need to have some better representation of individual neighborhoods. But I also don't want to restate everything that the others have said. I'm disappointed, looking at our council right now, that I see that things have not been followed in a lawful way. And I don't know why a legal quagmire has to be created around this, and I don't know why each of you can't stand up in integrity and put an end to sort of a charade that's gone on for the last couple of years. Because the charter speaks very plainly. The charter has not been changed, and it presents a problem we're in right now. You're all sitting in these seats. You have the authority to do what you need to do, but it seems unusual or suspicious that, a few weeks ahead of an election, ballots have already been voted on, ballots are going to continue to be voted on, in a system that's not what's lawfully in place. It's not what's in our charter. Now, personally, I don't think the 7-3-1 system was ideal. I don't think the 10-1 system is ideal either. I know there's letters that have gone to you from other associations and statements of support of those things, talking about having seven districts and three at-large members, or six and four. There's other ways to do that, and to balance out the needs of both these things that are sensible, and it can be put before in a referendum, put to the people, and put to the normal process of changing a charter. And at this point, we are in a legal quagmire that you're going to have to dig out of, or you're going to pass that on to the next council, who's going to be with a stickier issue, to still have to dig out of. It needs to be done. It needs to get fixed. And passing some thing about a proposed charter change right now the wrong way just makes the quagmire worse. Plain and simple.
Thank you.
The next speaker is Gary McCollum. After Mr. McCollum is Julius Hoggard.
Mr. Mayor, council, as we all know, Virginia Beach is much more than the oceanfront. And when I saw the letter submitted by the Virginia Beach Hotel Motel Association, the Virginia Beach Restaurant Association, and the Atlantic Avenue Association, I was reminded that we still have some powerful groups still trying to control the city and are trying to dissolve what our citizens have supported, and that's the 10-1 system. While these groups are entitled to their opinion and are afforded the opportunity, just like all of us, to voice their opinion, we have to look at the facts. We are reminded of how we got to this place. We had a federal lawsuit. We all know that. We had action by the Virginia General Assembly. More importantly, the opposition has had ample time to show what they want to do about this issue. The 10-1 system works, and the charter language and the legislative package cleans up language that's needed to be in sync with the General Assembly. And we all in this room know this happens all the time. This is not anything unusual. So, we also reminded that these associations and individuals who continue to fight against the 10-1 system, if they really wanted change, maybe they should have organized a referendum question. Or maybe they should have participated in the citizen engagement process that the city paid, I don't know, a couple hundred thousand dollars for, and frankly, you did a good job with it. And we know what those results say. They came back saying, after people engaged and were informed, they were surveyed, and over 80% of the people favored the 10-1 system. So to say that members of these organizations didn't understand, did not like it, they had every opportunity to participate in this process. It also shows that these special interest groups, they want to go backwards to the old system. Please do the right thing. Let's move forward on this charter change, and let's take our city forward and that backwards. Thank you very much.
The next speaker is Julius Hoggard. After Mr. Hoggard is Carl Wright.
Good evening.
Hey, good evening. I don't know too much about the 7-3 and what's been going on in the past, or whatever like that, but I'm a resident of Virginia Beach, and I've been up here since, like, 2012 from North Carolina. And the 10-1 system seems like it would be favorable affair to the districts. And if it's already been chartered, why, you know, and I can't go after Mr. McCollum, he already said what, you know, so thank you.
Thanks for coming. Appreciate it.
Carl Wright, and after Mr. Wright is Aaron Rouse.
Good evening.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor. City council, Ms. Henley, all the good folks, Mr. Mark Styles, the city manager. I don't want to come up here and start cracking jokes or anything, but this 10-1 system has become a joke. It really has. We know we are Dillon Rule state. Do we know what Dillon Rule mean? I don't care how many times you say you don't like a situation, that doesn't change the fact that we're Dillon Rule state. When the federal speaks, they speak loud. When the state speaks, they speak loud. When 80% of the community speak, they speak in volume. That small nucleus of folk with the power that do the things behind the back door, that's not going to work. We see it every, all the time on TV, all over the country. They ask for a change in the system, and the system has changed. Now, this 10-1 system is the best I've seen since I've been here, because it's not just about folks of color having a seat on the podium, it's about accountability as well. See, some folks don't want to be held accountable. They wanted to do what they wanted to do in their district and just depend on their other, on their friends and other parts of the city to get them over. Those days are over. So we might as well get over it. I mean, I don't know, this is probably the fifth time I've come down here myself. I thought it was done and over with. Who up there is powerful enough to change the government, to make the government do something different? Judge Jackson has spoken. The state of Virginia has spoken. That little small group of folks, and they suing them, I challenge them, keep suing. People sue, they sue the government and the state every day, keep suing. If you have those type of funds and that type of time to keep suing them, keep suing them. I remember the first time this suit came up, I was in this, I was in this chambers, and a lady came up, and Mrs. Styles probably remembered that. She said, "Oh, that ain't no bad ass suing, that ain't going nowhere." Mark Styles said, "Yes, it is." He said, "Yes, it is," and it became a large suit, a situation I was there every day. I can tell you, you can keep having these forms and keep having folk come out and folks threatening to sue, and "I'll sue you, and I'll sue you, and I'll sue you." Keep suing. It's not going to change a thing. I mean, for those that's been around in America long enough, it's not going to change anything. Do the right thing.
Thank you, Carl. Appreciate it.
The last speaker is Aaron Rouse.
Welcome, Aaron.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Vice Mayor, City Manager, Attorney Styles, Madam Clerk. Good to see you all again. As Chairman of the Senate Privileges and Elections Committee and patron of Senate Bill 189, it was my responsibility on behalf of the city to align our city charter with what the federal courts have stated, also with what our state's law has stated. Now, I just want to give a brief perspective on how that bill fared. Now, it went through the Senate two years running in two sessions, voted on unanimously throughout the Senate. It passed the House last year, but it wasn't without its obstacles. Members of our delegation, and it's not a partisan issue, I want to make that clear, just stating facts here, members of the Republican delegation spread misinformation that caused a lot of angst inside the House. It was my responsibility to clean that up. I have strong relationships on both sides of the aisle and was able to present the facts. One fact was glaring and was even missing throughout the entire process, and that fact was that, when I was a member of the city council, and former city councilmember Jessica Abbott brought forth a resolution in form of to ask the public what they thought about our city's election system. Should we or should we not put in a referendum? The council at that time voted that down. Now, here we are, in 2024, having to bring our charter into alignment with what federal courts have stated, and also with Virginia law. And so, I'm a bit bewildered at this public hearing, but I'm also proud of the fact that 10 of you have voted to support the 10-1 election system. And I think that is because of you have exhausted your measures in overturning that 10-1 system. Understandably, there were millions of dollars spent appealing this to the Fourth Circuit Court. Also, there was $188,000 spent on doing a public survey, which yielded over 80% of the public saying they liked the 10-1 system. Mind you, now we have still a strong and direct effort to overturn the will of the people. Why? Well, it comes down to money. The status quo wants to be able to have more than one representative to represent the oceanfront. And after they lost their election in 2023, they saw other means. Now, this is the same status quo, number one of six seconds, that spent $160,000 to win a district. That did not happen. So why are we here? Listen to the voice of the people.
Thank you, Aaron. Appreciate it.
Mayor, that's all the speakers.
Okay, thank you all for coming. The next public hearing is the Acquisition by Agreement or Condemnation for Bus Stop Infrastructure and Accessibility Improvement Phase 9A Project.
We have one speaker, Craig Henson.
Welcome back.
Good evening again, council. I just want to simply state that I'm an advocate for any infrastructure and accessibility improvements at bus stops or anywhere around the city. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
That's all the speakers on that public hearing.
Okay, next on is the public comment, 2025 Draft Legislation Agenda. Any speakers?
We have one speaker, Craig Henson.
I do apologize, can you repeat what agenda?
I'm sorry, this is for the public comment for the 2025 Draft Legislative Agenda.
Good evening again, council. As far as the draft legislative agenda, besides the charter amendment change that I'm against, I think the city could do, be creative on your own and come up with something other than a 10-1 or a 7-3-1. I think it's possible. But as far as the legislative agenda, I sent this over to one of the city attorneys, Mark Styles. I noticed low-impact utility markings. I'm certified by the Virginia State Corporation Commission, Division of Utility and Railroad, and they oversee utility markings. They're a separate entity than the General Assembly, so you might want to look at sending this legislative item for low-impact utility markings- for low-impact utility markings to the Virginia State Corporation Commission. Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
That's all the speakers for the public comment.
Okay, at this point, before the consent agenda, I want to remind everyone that the city council speaker policy that allows certain representatives of groups to speak for 10 minutes applies only to planning items. All other speakers, whether speaking individually or embedded half of a group, will have up to three minutes to speak on a single item. Speakers are reminded that comments during the formal session of the meeting must be limited to the subject of the item that is being considered by council at the time you are called. For items placed on the consent agenda, a speaker will have up to three minutes to address any single item. If a speaker wishes to address multiple consent agenda items, the speaker will have a cumulative total of six minutes to address those items. Again, the speaker must limit his or her comments to the subject matter of the items they have signed up to address. And finally, I call upon all speakers and all persons in the chamber to be civil in their discussion and decorum. Whatever views you hold and wish to express, the city council wants to hear from you and to ensure that all viewpoints and all persons are respected. The best way to do this is for all of us to strive for civility and respect. Okay? Any speakers?
Yes, um, for K1, Charlotte Zito, which is the ordinance for nighttime use of city libraries property.
Good evening and welcome.
Good evening. Um, I'm here speaking in support of the ordinance to add City Code Section 17-7 pertaining to nighttime use of city libraries. And I'm very grateful to the council for considering this ordinance. Um, I'm speaking in my capacity as Vice Chair of the Virginia Beach Public Library Board. I've just started my third year on the board, and I have learned a great deal about how this ordinance can help to keep our library grounds in Virginia Beach neighborhoods safe and clean. It's very tough for people who are unhoused, and I really do recognize that. And I also appreciate that the Virginia Beach Public Library System offers lots of resources for people who are unhoused. But unfortunately, in the evenings, in the nighttimes, we're seeing issues of waste, issues of pollution, no toilet access. It's not safe for people to be in encampments or in cars that are parked for weeks and months at a time on library grounds. We've even had some situations of crimes being committed, people being attacked on library grounds in the nighttime. I've also learned that we've had vehicles that have been left without tires and plates, abandoned essentially on library grounds. And it's very difficult to address those issues and that this ordinance will give the city of Virginia Beach the tools it needs to address these issues. So I want to thank the council for considering this important issue. I'm a huge advocate of our Virginia Beach Public Library System. I think it's wonderful, and I'm grateful for all the work you're doing to keep it safe. Thank you.
And thank you all for the marvelous work that you've been doing through the city throughout the years. We really appreciate it.
Thank you, Mayor Dyer.
Mayor Dyer, that's the only speaker for one item, so we're ready for the consent agenda.
Okay, we're ready.
We don't have anything on K2?
Um, no, ma'am. He asked to be removed.
Okay. All right. Mr. Mayor, members of council, under ordinance and resolutions, number one is the ordinance to add City Code Section 17-7, rate nighttime use of city library properties with Council Lady Wooton voting no. Number two is the ordinance to amend City Code Chapter 6, Article 1, rate obstructing and contaminating the waterways. Number three is a resolution to ratify amendments to the Community Services Board bylaws. Number four is a resolution to direct the city manager to impose conditions upon the city's future financial support, rate something in the Water Festival. Number five is the continuance to extend the date for satisfying the conditions in the matter of Commonwealth Brewing Company, LLC, to closing a portion of Lake Drive adjacent to 2444 Pleasure House Road. Number six is the ordinance to authorize temporary encroachments into a 20-foot city-owned drainage easement and a five-foot city-owned drainage and utility easement at the rear of 1414 Seabreeze Trail, rate maintain existing concrete ramp and timber floating dock with a lift and construct and maintain a vinyl bulkhead. And that's in District 8. Number seven is the ordinance to accept and appropriate $142,074 from the Virginia Department of Behavioral Health and Developmental Services to the FY 2024-25 Human Services Operating Budget and authorize one full-time position, rate support substance use disorder clinical services. Number eight is the ordinance to accept and appropriate $80,000 from the Virginia Department of Criminal Justice Services to the FY 2024-25 Police Department Operating Budget, rate the purchase equipment to reduce violent crime. Number nine is the ordinance to accept and appropriate $74,588 from the United States Department of Homeland Security to the FY 2024-25 Police Department Operating Budget and transfer $24,863 within the FY 2024-25 Police Department Operating Budget to provide the required local grant match, rate marine patrol equipment. Number 10 is the ordinance to accept and appropriate $37,431 from the Supreme Court of Virginia Office of the Executive Secretary to FY 2024-25 Commonwealth Attorney Operating Budget and authorize a 25% grant match, rate drug and alcohol testing for the Virginia Beach Drug Court.
Are open a public hearing on planning?
One more first. Okay, we got, that's right, we're pulling. Uh, number, under planning, number one, Beach Framing and Drywall LLC for a variance to Section 4.4B of the subdivision regulations to replace an existing mobile home with a single-family dwelling or a parcel directly east of 1924 Gumbridge Road. And that is in District 2. Number two is the Sugar Plum LLC for the modification of proffers, rate bakery specializing in dog treats and similar products at 1361 Laskin Road, and that is in District 6. Number three, Ferber Company Central LLC, Lynn Haven BOA LLC and Lynn Haven BOA Q LLC for modification of proffers, rate to redevelop the site with an eating and drinking establishment with a drive-through at 2061 Lynn Haven Parkway. And that is District 7. Number four is the Fourth Generation Home Builders LLC for a conditional change of zoning from PDH1 Planned Unit Development to Conditional A-18 Apartments District Amendment in Land Use Plan to develop a 25-unit multi-residential townhome condominium community for a parcel on commuter drive, excuse me, directly east of 1436 South Independence Boulevard. And that is in District 10. Number five is MetLife Valia, excuse me, Meli Valianos Rentals, Valianos Properties LLC for modification of a condition to a conditional use permit and a conditional use permit, rate automotive, automotive bill repair garage at 619 London Bridge Road. And that is in District 3. Number six is Aaron C. Davenport and Aaron S. Kendra Davenport for conditional use permit, rate short-term rental at 421 22nd Street. And that is in District 6. Number seven is Travis Smith, Travis and Elizabeth Smith, for a conditional use permit, rate short-term rental at 204 28th Street. And that is in Unit 205, District 6. And then a number eight, and this is going to be, to defer it until November 12th, the ordinance to adopt and incorporate into the Virginia Beach Comprehensive Plan 2016, rate the Urban Force Management Plan 2023, which will supersede the Urban Force Management Plan in 2014. A move for approval.
You have a second?
Second.
Okay.
The vote is open. By a vote of 11 to 0, noting Councilmember Wooton's nay vote for K1, you have approved the consent agenda as read by Vice Mayor. I'm sorry, yes, K1.
Okay, now go back to item 11. Ordinance to appropriate 4.3 million to fund the balance of the general fund for the fiscal year 2024-2025 operating budget and transfer funds as pay-go fund in a capital project number 100664, Virginia Beach 3531 Memorial, rate construction of Virginia Beach 531 Memorial.
The first speaker is James Thomas Moore. After Mr. Moore will be Charlotte Zito.
Good evening. Good evening, members of Virginia Beach City Council. My name's James Moore. I stand before you as a survivor of nine, of May 31, 2019, the mass shooting. I'm here to express my deep concerns and disappointment of the city's decision to spend over 12 million on a permanent monument while survivors, those of us who lived through that horrific day, continue to be left behind. I want to be very clear. I am not opposed to honoring my colleagues whose lives were tragically lost that day. Their memories deserve to be preserved. We must be, never forget that horror, the horror of what happened. However, the additional funding being requested or the money being requested for this memorial is simply not necessary. Those millions could be better spent addressing the real ongoing needs of the victims, those who are still struggling every day to overcome the trauma they experienced. There is a reality that has been overlooked. The victims of May 31st are not just those that had their lives lost. Many of those, many of us who were in that building that day are still suffering. We are dealing with profound grief, PTSD, fear, and a range of psychological, emotional challenges that impact our daily lives. There are, there are survivors who have been unable to return to work, unable to sleep, unable to carry on with any sense of normal life. And yet, there has been little or no support from this city for those of us trying to heal. Sad. I can speak to this firsthand. I relive this trauma every day. Every moment is a reminder of the terror we endured. Simple tasks like going to work or spending time with my family are now consumed with anxiety and grief. Well, psycho. While a physical memorial might offer a place for reflection, it does not, it does nothing to address the ongoing needs of survivors. It does nothing to help those who continue to still struggle five years later. I can't do this. Still spending over 12 million on a permanent memorial is strongly believes the money would be better spent on keeping VB Strong Center open for the victims of 531. The employees who were there in the building, that building, and who are still suffering from grief, PTO, oh my goodness, comes from witnessing that mass shooting. The center has provided critical mental health support and services and resources, but there are still so many of us who are suffering in silence. People who are unable to work and can't sleep through the night. We are unable to carry on with a normal life. The additional funding should be directed toward expanding mental health services and providing financial relief and help for survivors.
Thank you very much, sir. Appreciate you coming.
I expect it.
The next speaker is Charlotte Zito. And then Tara Reel.
Welcome back.
Thank you. I'm speaking here tonight to support Agenda Item K11, the ordinance to appropriate 4.3 million dollars and transfer funds for the construction of the Virginia Beach May 31st Memorial. I'm personally grateful for the opportunity to serve on the May 31st Memorial Committee, and I want to thank councilmembers Sabrina Wooton and Michael Berluci for their consistent support of our work together. I believe that the proposals made by Dills Architects truly bring the work of our committee and the desires expressed by family members, friends, colleagues, and some survivors to beautiful reality. I want to lend my voice to the others who are here tonight and say thank you for the city council's consistent support of our committee's work. Thank you.
Thanks again.
The next speaker is Tara Reel. And after Ms. Reel will have one WebEx speaker.
Hey, Tara, welcome back.
It's always good to come back to the city of Virginia Beach. Good evening, Honorable Mayor and City Council members. And when I say that, I sometimes walk into these rooms and I see so many familiar faces of people that I worked with, people that I worked for. And I tried to remember the good memories. I can remember back in 2019, that April, we were coming off such a high with something in the water. And the word that hit me today was legacy. We were excited about the legacy of what that festival would mean for our city. And legacy is what my friends and colleagues who died that day on May 31st left behind. It's taken us a very long time to get here, and I knew it was going to get harder as we headed towards construction. And having worked in just about, I think, every department in a city that you can, thank you for that. I'm a proud public servant in what I can do for the citizens here. But I do know that construction costs can run high. I said from the very beginning and all of my, on all of my comments that this was a concept. And we knew that that concept may change. And I wanted to make sure the public understood that. I feel that the city staff and everybody involved in this took a hard look because I know it came in higher than that. And they made some design changes that I think were appropriate to try to come back and ask that we see this through. And tonight, this is going to be a part of your legacy. Come the new year, some of you aren't going to be sitting in your seats. But there will be a lot of people who remember this decision. And Mr. Moore is an example of the many city employees that I hear from every single day, some who are only able to talk about this today. And my only hope is that the legacy of this memorial ends up bringing them peace and solace, a place to reflect, and that when they see it, they know that they were never forgotten. Thank you.
Thank you.
We have one WebEx speaker, Rhonda Marsh. Ms. Marsh, you are unmuted and may begin. Mayor, that's all the speakers.
Okay, Mr. Berlucci.
Thank you, Mayor. Mr. Mayor, in memory of the men and women who lost their lives, in support of their loved ones, in honor of the first responders, the survivors, and our entire VB Strong community, I move for approval.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Okay, any other comments? Let's open the vote.
The vote is open. Vice Mayor, may I have your vote, please? It's there now. Thank you. By a vote of 11 to 0, you have approved the ordinance.
Okay, thank you. Okay, I understand we have an appointment.
Yes, Mr. Mayor. We have one appointment, and it's for the Open Space Advisory Committee, and it's for Steve Rockefeller, who represents Parks and Rec Commission.
Okay. Any comment? Let's open the vote.
The vote is open. By a vote of 11 to 0, you have made the appointment.
Okay, any unfinished business? Any new business? Thank you all. We are adjourned. Thank you all for participating tonight.